Wants to.
My mother told me that's how my name was. If I had a kid in the hospital. I'm sure it wasn't. Either exist or that one.
Oh, I don't know.
Because she was running on the Britain House and said, when you die. It's filling my black. And we got our son gone. She saved one in the scrap.
What do you survive in? I'm living in. Did you have to go back after that day? Which day? Oh geez. Now we came in for. Here we came in for lunch and just got hit right at eleven o'clock. No, but I don't think I got home till seven thirty. Okay.
You're recording? Six o'clock, I'll be in order. If this can even have the role. And I will dispense with questions unless there is an objection. And we'll move on. Then you approval of the season.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. A second? One second. Any discussion? All favor? Most. agenda is approved. All business. You have a proposal?
We do, and Chris was going to attend, but it sent him an invite. Um, that's why I rearranged the agenda to put him at the top, so it does show up. Um, on Zoom and. But council has any questions regarding the proposal? You can address them. See, it is the only audit company that put in an RFP. Provided the proposal to everybody, hard copy it was, uh, that was requested from all the. Uh, in the RFP. And then there's electronic that I put in the agenda. So, given the fact that he is not in attendance at this point. I guess I would feel that any thoughts and questions? The council had. At this point.
All of those.
It's double.
Options are gonna be.
Yeah, it's double. It it really stinks that. Doesn't matter what size city. You have, you're required to submit an audit. To the state auditor, especially if you're. Your revenue is at a certain level, so. We have no choice but to do this, so I don't know. How else to get around it, but to. Take the only proposal and pay what they're asking. And that's. Doesn't sit ease with me, but. Yeah, there isn't a whole lot of. Available time out there for proposals.
Notice they have a similar city listing.
Yeah.
Sure. It should be some other ways since.
It was.
Started there and.
Yep.
Uh, Rice Lake is another one.
Yep, Rice Lake is is probably very similar. Yep.
They're doing it a little serious.
I mean, I I met with them like I stated at a previous meeting for, you know, almost an hour. Got really good. Um, report. And knowing that. Any audit company that we've probably switched to would not be local. You know, the amount of communication you have to do. Either through Zoom or. Over email. And upload documents is gonna be. The name of the game going forward. We're not gonna get a lot of. In person. But I like the, I like that the fact that this company has. Is nationwide, not just Minnesota, so they'll have a lot of. Experience.
So the West Virginia.
Yep. Um, they're a very large company, so they've got a lot of resources. And, um. All the resources that were listed are extremely. First and municipal. Finances, so. I. Feel comfortable saying that we have. You know, quick questions answered or quick answers to questions if I have them. Uh, much like our attorney's office, they're, you know. Available for anybody, whether Joe Lando is is in office or not, somebody who's there to answer my questions, so. That's a positive. Um, I just have a really hard time with the compensation, but. Maybe we've been getting by. For the last, I don't know how many years out of budget. Past.
Well, I'm looking at the increase, the proposals. You know, about. Thousand a year.
Yeah, and that's just for inflation and wages and. It's not much, but.
Well, forty thousand dollars in twenty six. Thirty six is fifty thousand.
No, this be the company that comes like when we do our. You know, they will come, okay? It would be, but they won't come. Okay, so we won't have a somebody.
Won't have anybody on site, on site for any tour. So.
Because, yeah, well, yeah, it says not including travel, so they could travel.
If needed, yes, if you look at the below.
Right.
Um, yes, if they needed to travel, that would be there, so right now. We, and for twenty three's audit, we. Had a total to Noah McDonald at eighteen thousand dollars. Actually, I shouldn't say that, it's twenty, twenty one thousand dollars, so this is a considerable. Right, that cost increase.
No, we don't. It's that barrel thing, you know, we're over it.
I mean, in one hand. This could be an opportunity for. Knowledge that I haven't been privy to because I may have a new company with a clean. Lens of our finances and we might actually have. Learned a little more than what I've been doing, kicking a hand on the road with my current one. Um, I could also, on the other hand, and I might find out some things I've been doing wrong that I didn't know. But I'm always open to learning. Um. But. There aren't a lot that have time to take on new clients. Um, sure, any contractual company is like that, you know, it's easy to say, you know, yeah, we want more business, but if you don't have the capital. And the staff. To put in to sign that contract.
I'm over it.
You know, then you're not, you're not doing yourself a service.
And well, I mean, unless somebody has some. Hold off on this.
That's. I mean, does anybody have any specific questions, because he did ask. Um, this morning.
So what's? How soon will we have to have them on board to start? Giving us a meeting.
Um, we are without representation right now. Haven't been since Noah Donald sent us the letter in August. So the sooner the better. Um, provided when. I usually start year end. Prep. The November council meeting would be. Um, the expectation to make a decision, plus that's how I drafted the RFP run.
No, I have one. Let's, uh. Silence.
No specific questions? Even if Chris can't make it, but if I can relay.
Using AI to summarize stuff? You know, that's taking stuff out of context and putting it. You know, instead of a direct. You're sitting there talking to someone. Now it's just.
I don't really know how AI works in the finance world right now. I keep looking at it thinking there's gotta be somebody that still has to do data entry, so how do you use AI for data entry, but? Apparently, there's ways to use AI for just about.
I mean, we use it all the time. Get it right.
Well, it's it's more, it's more than that, it's more than that.
Yeah, we're looking at, you know, it's never been very developed, obviously, we're still looking for that kid, Kim, assistance, and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You still need that.
You need that. You need that. Knowledge of the history of what happens, I mean. To put it into perspective. When I have the onsite audit, it's February. An auditor could be asking me questions or what happened the year prior in January. So you need the knowledge of somebody. Like myself and Paige, in the goals that we have to be able to rely upon, okay, something happened on payroll three. Of the previous year. What happened, you know, um? And there's all kinds of variables that you need to be able to rely on. When you have a significant payroll increase and it could be wages, it could be. Para contributions, it could be health, health insurance contributions, and you need to be able to have. The person, like you said, the human aspect to be able to know what changed, so that. When it gets to the state auditor. There's a. Logical compliance. Right. The AI, I don't know, really, it's still too new to me. I don't even want it in my son's. Schoolwork, so I'm like the old school kind of thing, right? Don't, don't plagiarize, right? You know, I. Apparently, there's, there's new software out there for.
Yeah, here, whatever, it'll write an entire essay on.
Anything.
The Civil War, you're gonna do it down.
Well, but they can also check that and they can spot, uh, failures within seconds.
Yeah, just add a couple ifs and ands.
Couple words again.
There's tools that can detect the AI.
So there's AI to detect AI, yes, yeah, that's that's even better.
Nice.
Fox watching the house or anything, yeah, all right. If there's nothing else on this proposal, I think. Sadly, I I guess we're all insane. But I'm sure they're a good firm, and I'm just. Wow.
I know.
Good.
I was impressed by the presentation I saw, I I feel. Um, relieved knowing that their team is. Really skilled and that they've got other experience working with smaller cities of our size. So it'll be similar. But there will also.
Cities of our size are. In the same.
Oh, yeah.
Feet.
Oh, yeah.
This is not something. Without it.
Right.
Well, and they're a big firm and then, you know, they're pretty involved in our local chamber and brand, so they're with their smaller regional offices, they're community oriented, community based, so they're, you know, they're a big firm, but they're also, um. Community oriented, so that's nice to see.
Thanks, Tim, I forgot about that then, yeah. They have that branch in the.
So is that the closest branch?
Yes, that's the closest.
However, that's not the branch that deserves it. It's the downtown.
Right.
Something six three.
Right.
Everybody did on how it's. Well, I mean, that's probably different. Well, then. I mean, barring anything else, I I guess just put it on the next. Council meeting, we approve it.
Given that it's the only one, I can, I can even put it on the percentage. Right. If Chris ha- Chris happens to pop in.
Sure.
By by far, we'll split off and. Talk to them.
All right, moving on, the ER reports.
I mean, not much of a, I think, Kita was here last time and. I don't know, maybe it was a graphic, but he's either put up. That's maybe sixty nine, but. But anyone, I. Yes, that's anything you could get back. Yeah, I just had. They only have. A lot of work and I don't have people behind it.
And hunting season started, so. We'll have, like, all in November, close down.
So you're saying, so you're saying next meeting probably not?
I'm going to try.
No promises.
Probably try. Because you gotta make sure that go best mistake.
Well, let's stay safe out there this year, though, you know?
Yes, yeah.
Yes. You do, don't do it by yourself.
No reviewing documents in the stand.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's drafted properly, but.
Even then.
Crazy. Anything what happens in one year?
Yeah.
All right, anything you want to library?
Uh, yeah, actually, I've, um, I have some new stuff to update everybody on. Uh, Tony Gustafson met with. Uh, Kelly and myself at the library Friday before last. Um, I brought the. Floor layouts. And the discussion from the work session. At that time, he had some great ideas. Um, and he took all those, he took those layouts and those ideas and the feedback from Kelly and myself. Um, he is accepting the job, asked for a timeline and a budget, and I kind of. Wishy-wash told him anytime soon and no more than a hundred grand. And. He's like, oh, it can happen soon, and there's no way it would be a hundred grand, so I was kind of feeling really good, but, um. Really great budget minded, nice guy. He will definitely do the library of service. Um, I have not gotten his proposal yet, so when I do, when I do, I will definitely get it back to you guys on. But. He will subcontract the electrical, the plumbing and everything and put together one package so that he knows. The one thing he pulled out of our walkthrough that we probably didn't really identify when we discussed. Taking the library meeting or the the office walls down is that the, um. The thermostat for the floor heat is in that west wall of that office on the exterior side. So that's something that would need to get relocated, so there's a lot of electrical, some switches on the north wall of that office, exterior north wall of that office. That will also need to get relocated if, when it, when those walls come down and we open that up.
You say exterior of the building?
No, no, um.
How the office stays.
Yeah.
Exterior means outside.
I know, I'm sorry, so if you, if you walk in that.
Or interior.
Then the interior beneath the, I guess. Kelly refers to it as the office, it's, it's the one room that's completely closed off with a door behind their registration, their registration, registration desk. And. On one of those walls on the outside, not inside the room, but on the outside, is a thermostat for the floor heat. And on. The north one. Yeah, the north. No, that would be the east wall, I'm sorry. Are like. Four light switches. So knowing that would have to, you know, electro will have to be. Re-run every different place, so that's one of those things that he called out. Um, have some great ideas on. Making the. One family or the one restroom. A little bit bigger. So it's, it just blows better. And then reload, using some of the ideas that would set about relocating the entrance into the restroom. And, um. To remain ADA. But also stay within a budget. So, um. He also knows that the library and the council discussed this in inter- in like a phased. Process for us to get the things that we need on our bucket list first. And to play that into, um, oh, we're gonna transition with the rest of it too, so. Um, hopefully, it'll be a good presentation or a budget. A big budget that we can afford. So. Do you have any feedback from the library?
I actually do, so I, because we met again. That's good. Get us to go. They have, they have requested, um. Formal request. To have the crosswalk painted at Summit and First.
The crosswalk painted at Summit and First, that's a county road. They want a crosswalk painted?
They want it painted, yeah.
We'll be trying to count them for that.
All right, I told my one, just, I would bring it up and we'll see where.
So there's no crosswalks painted on the intersection of First and Summit at all? I walked through the models.
There's crosswalks.
There's crosswalks there.
I think that it's faded. Out.
Okay.
I guess.
Well, they just.
They just, they just did them, okay.
Well, that's what we asked for.
Awards before they dump the car.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But that's.
They had to say, they had to cover up the existing ones. And then pull them back and repaint them.
And then, do you know anymore about the door? Did, did it come and do the door, the? Hinges on the door?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, but that was gonna be the first.
Let me make a note about this crosswalk thing and then I've got a comment about that.
Yeah, because I was like, oh, okay, I don't walk that way so much, I do a different route, but. That's. What I wrote, that's what they told me.
I can send an email to the county, but given the timeframe of the season, it won't get painted deeper when.
No.
Um. As of.
I go to the post office.
Yeah.
Before we send an email, I think somebody should look at it.
Yes, I know it's painted, it maybe needs a fresh coat of paint, but. I, I know it's there.
Well, I'm sure it probably is there, I think what they were saying. Didn't need another morning, but.
They're not gonna do any more law.
I'm here to report.
Thank you. As it pertains to the door, I have had a conversation with, um, Clarity Glass. Um, Tony Gustafson actually looked at the door, could see how it was crooked and said. Clarity should be able to fix that. Temporarily, and then also give us a quote for a replacement, so in speaking with John from Clarity last week. He is gonna send one of his staff members up to take a peek at the door. Um, I gave him authorization to replace the existing door hinge with a piano door hinge, he believes that that will fix the problem that I discussed with him. But if there's anything more that needs to be done. They will write up the report and give to John and then give it to me.
Okay.
That's his staff, but.
Right.
The way I explained it to John at Clarity, he believes a piano hinge will repair. The, um. The unsверness, um, the mess of the door as it sits right now, um, and then he'll also give us a quote for, um, replacing the door completely.
Did, has anybody mentioned the fact that they'd like less glass in the next door if there's a door?
No, and I'm not going down that road anymore, that's.
Okay.
The details are starting to get a little desolate in my mind, but.
Just. Send it on.
Yeah.
I'm sure I covered it.
I. Where you put a picture, what color the paint is, all that kind of stuff.
And they're working on their own sign stuff, so.
Oh, good, that's good.
They're dealing with that, so.
So, yeah, hopefully Clarity will be up this week.
This week, okay.
I, I gave Clarity authorization to switch the hinge out.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, they're the ones that did the door.
Yes, and they did our door and those two, that's what I do, I'm back to them, yeah.
Are they gonna move the door over? Is it a temporary fix?
No.
The biggest.
No, the door is not gonna move and, no, it's not a temporary fix.
It should be the fix that. Hopefully. It locks easy and puts the draft in the snow and the ice out. That's the goal of the door.
Everything that was discussed of the work session did not include moving that door.
I thought they were gonna. Do the entry over at the middle.
Middle of what?
Well, they were.
The wall.
From the south over. Have the entry come in more. More to the middle of the building.
That's the first I remember hearing, I don't recall hearing any of that.
So it's, the door is gonna stay in the same place.
Gosh, I hope so, we just did the sidewalk and the. Yeah, that would be. Do that.
No.
Right.
That's why I, I.
Yeah, no.
Wow.
Let's just. Put a pin in that one. I don't think. I think otherwise the details are. Yes, I pulled that pin.
No.
No, let's, let's forget about that one.
Door's staying right there, exactly.
Okay. I'm glad you asked, though, because if that was what you recalled on, I, I didn't have any notes about that.
No, I think when they said, if you wanted to move the entry over. Would it then take part of the bathroom and make the entry, that's. Maybe.
But not the door.
Not the front door.
No.
Right, but. You're right.
Okay.
No problem. All right.
Okay, but I, I've given Tony his marching orders and just waiting to. So, because he knows that all three boards have to approve. Everything. So I told him this is not gonna go quick. But this is, this is the process you're up against and he's up for the challenge, so.
Well, and I guess some of my concern about how we phase it, that's not like gonna change anything, um, is the cost of the, that we may see spiking those given the disasters.
Yeah.
So hopefully. Trying to keep that in mind as we move. Through our faces, sure.
Anything else on the library?
I think that's it. So if you have an opportunity with this warm weather to walk around today, you'll notice that Cheryl completed the painting this weekend. My doctor today and. Think it looks fabulous. Thing between what Nick did and what Cheryl did. Today.
Now you guys fixed the, we found the small book.
That's, yeah, Nick.
The original.
Yeah, Nick.
Main street, uh, catched it and.
Cheryl refitted it, no. Yeah. Yeah. Oh. That's a good call on next part of this day, it could be the. But what we do need to discuss is the lion's duck at the wayside. And what the plan is. Um, for that, because. That's, you know, obviously gonna lend us some money and I don't know if there's other ideas anybody has. To go on the cheap like we just did with the lion, with the historic duck.
How you feeling, Nick?
The biggest expense is the base.
Base is the, yeah, and getting the statue off. Fix it, I mean, I even think, I even think the base itself probably isn't gonna cost that much. It's just.
Getting the crane and then lift it up.
The mobilization to do so, so. I don't know. Can we take this and find somebody local that has the equipment, like a locker? Or somebody? Will, and we do the work?
How about this?
Yeah.
You have, uh, mentioned, uh, very positive comments by the gentleman named Tony Gustafson, that would be worth. Other than him over there, I have to take a look at that.
No, I don't know if he's got. The equipment to do that, but.
Well, we need somebody that manages the project, so.
Agreed.
He would sub out a crane or something. I don't think it'd be a ways that much. I think we need a hundred ton crane to lift up that. So you're thinking a couple of barco loaders and?
It's got, I mean, obviously, whatever you. Put the lion or the duck on, it's gotta be tall enough, right? I mean, the thing is.
I mean, you know, you, you know, logging boom and, you know, knuckle to. Circle seven dollars.
Not unheard of.
That's all, I've seen logging trucks pick up a boat. I mean, it's a weird stuff.
Well, there's enough waters around here, I would imagine we'd probably get a hold of one of them. Well, there's enough walkers around here, I would imagine we probably could hold a one of them.
I just wouldn't wanna be the one that goes, oh no. Oops.
It's gonna be oops one way or the other, really, if you don't do something. It's not gonna last, if you do something and it oops as well.
Cause right now it's the base that, that's the main concern because it's starting to deteriorate inside.
Yeah.
The holes get rolling?
I haven't, I've only seen Mike one day, so I can't tell you for sure. Yeah, um. Is it Kerky? Out of the past like that always moves the house that is very well. They, they aren't in not business anymore? I was gonna say, I wonder if he.
Does Skinny still do it? Yeah, the molar maneuvers is the cabinet. I don't know who's doing that, moving around here anymore.
Kerky quit doing it. So we don't know who uh, who moved the, the last house at the school. Cause Freeman bought it.
Yeah, I know, but I could ask, I could ask him.
I'm just wondering if there is a way that we can use our local resources, like we, like we just did.
I think you're probably onto something.
Yeah.
I think. That if somebody local wanted to tackle it. I think maybe. Ron's on something there with Tony, just seeing, maybe he's got a contact, knows someone.
Yeah.
Wants to. If he doesn't wanna venture out on that then, I wouldn't blame him on that front either.
Right.
Yeah, true, um, but GC is how it sounds.
I'll talk to Tony. But yeah, I'm wondering if there's. Somebody that's already covered by their own liability, you know, that can do that and because. Obviously, it's gotta be.
Swing around the duck and.
Obviously, it's gotta be a staged process, right? It's gotta come off. The platform has to be removed and then the platform has to go in, so we almost have to.
You have to be able to set that duck down someplace.
Put in, well, if you make, if you make the platform ahead of time. The new one. And are ready to go, you could take the duck off the existing one, remove it and probably put it down on the new one with a second base. But maybe not necessarily.
Totally, but again, yeah, I mean, cause there could be. Whatever dirt work involved underneath it also. How would that, that base be fine, I think it's just the raised platform is what's bad. That's kind of what I thought.
Let's get a little wet around there.
Come up the base. I, I don't know for Zena, I know that, you know.
Crushed granite salt's everything, right?
That's fiberglass, getting more gold.
I mean, obviously the painting side to it, we're gonna, we're gonna wanna have.
Obviously, the, the walkway, the paths to it. I think Mike would run us off the, and said, change how those are.
Right.
Done in the first place.
But we are also trying to do this on a budget.
Yeah.
We only have so much money to do it on, that's why I'm trying to think if there's a way to do it locally.
Right, and phase it, would the pass have to be changed this year?
No. Right. Yeah. Well, when I talk, when I see Tony, I can talk to him, but if you guys come up with some other resources. Bring him back and let's, let's keep brainstorming a way to do this next year.
So let's, we just have him go by there and look at it, to see if he's interested, is he not, you know.
Yeah.
Excited, just gonna handle this next thing, thanks anyway, or?
You know, he might know of somebody that could help out like anything, right?
The key thing is we need like a GC person to get the subs there.
Right, yeah.
And the cranes or whatever, so far as the, you know. The, the statue itself, the repainting of it. Probably the biggest, well, one of the biggest tasks. And one of the most difficult, so. A little more elaboration. Exactly. What's the word I'm looking for, it's a little more detailed, yeah.
Well, yeah, and there's, it would need to get cleaned first, or sprayed. There is some, some of the pictures she had does have, there is some faint loss and you can see the fiberglass underneath. And probably that is as smooth as the old duck was to like.
There's a lot of little ripples and bumps. It's more like a feathered texture.
It does look like a feather, yeah.
Sound like there's huge cracks or.
Well.
We don't know. Have we reached out to, the artist, the BAST Corporation, is that, is that, are they still on that?
Who, the people that made it originally? No, um, I don't know if they're in business anymore. I wanna remember what McCall said.
Would be forty years ago.
I just don't, I just don't know, and a lot of places they don't go on site. It's been a few years, Max, but. Chamberhead mentioned something about having it resurfaced. Around COVID, like two thousand nineteen or something like that, and. I wanna say that I tried to research the company that made this and reach out to them and at that time they would only. Service the statue if they, if it came to them.
Oh.
Yeah. Which I don't know if that's, I mean, that makes the crane seem like an easy idea versus. Just taking it on a truck and shipping it down to someplace that.
They make the statue.
Right.
So my question would be, I, I mean, I'm pretty sure we can come up with somebody to do the lifting. Moving and the replacement of the base. My question is, what about the, you know, basically outside?
The painting.
The pretty work, you know. On this, who's gonna, how do we source that? Locally? Looks like there's a clear coat of gloss on the other.
That does look a little. You know, that's something you see, was it Cody that took over Wilson's? Out of body and this?
Great stuff like that, I don't know.
Was there something? You could do, or you know somebody that could? Only for thinking local and not. You know, that extreme, but he might have an idea of what you could use on it. I mean, they do out of body and thinking, you know.
I mean, stretch may have an idea or resource to.
And resource there too.
Stretch. Out of body shop.
I mean, isn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Always good ideas.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, I'll talk to Tony when I see him.
Yeah, cause he definitely wanted some kind of finish on there, you know, like an automotive finish for this. You know, it's out there all the time.
Right.
Twenty-four seven, it doesn't.
You know, it weathered a lot.
How well it weathers is gonna be.
Right, there's a, we used to use this somewhere. Yeah, but I mean, I think it's not just, I mean, that's not the only thing out there, I guess my point is that they make it for cooking. You know, they have to follow these cookers, they need to look nice when they're put, put into somebody's business and it can be cooking. So there's, there's paints out there.
Sure.
Alright.
If you guys are, you guys are trying to find, trying to source this locally and try to pull our resources, then we should do it that way.
But I would do uh, some patches and some. Resin work, most of it looks like some of the fibers that are showing, could see the color resin. And so if they're a little bit more sun faded, I put a pad or something.
Right, good.
I think we have to keep in mind the, we need to fix a, a standing water in the base that has to be drained. I think Mike said he was gonna drill holes, create the foam and pavement to see what's going to make sure it's. Well, it's gonna freeze pretty soon. At least get it from taking more weeks.
I'll, I'll ask Mike if the holes got drilled very first, you know. That's no, I'm happy.
Yeah, guaranteed. Okay.
Well, too, I started to, you know, a massive fundraising thing and that's a whole other project on its own.
Right, I already went through it, yeah, I already went through it, I don't think I'm gonna. I don't know how much more I can tap that resource. I think at this point, it's gonna be a lot of in mind. And volunteerism, and our civic responsibility to eat that duck standings.
That's what we need to.
Yeah.
I'll bring that to the chamber too.
Okay.
That they need to be.
Yeah. Like. John Winat can, you know, help us fence it off while we're working, cause that's his deal, right? I mean, I'm sure we can get full our resources to do this locally. It's just nice to know that we have a good. Study of how much is really wrong with that. Right, and what we need to walk into, right, what we need to fix, right, whether we sourced out KCI to do it or we bend ourselves.
Either way, we're gonna leave it better than what we.
When it is, right.
We gotta make some improvements. Onward. City Hall.
I don't have any updates for you guys yet. I'm still working with, I'll turn the electric on the USDA application, so.
And I'll, alright, yeah. Been trying to connect with Mike, but he isn't available, so I'm certainly connected with him tonight, but. Yeah, after your season. We'll be following. Right. Yeah. There's just that one issue, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's how we wanna try to. Well, we don't, yeah, we don't. Yeah. I mean, it's not gonna impact operations. Live station?
I don't have anything.
Every time I.
Thank goodness, there's that.
I think I still dig that up this year.
I don't know, we're still, I, last, all I have is what Mike said the last meeting was about.
Our favorite topic. The local auction sales that. That has been seriously skewed.
By some public?
By some of the public.
Some of our voters. Did anybody get the mailer yet? Fantastic, okay. Um, the banner, there's a banner pop off also on our website when you. Go to black dot M N dot com, it pops up right away and says click here for more and pulls in the flyer. Um. Yes, we're, we've got some confusion of some voters out there.
And one of the problems was. That there's five questions and each one is asking for half a percent. So they've done the math. And that comes up to two and a half percent. Which is not what we would be raising the tax to.
You don't have a vote in the states, you know.
And there's a half a percent. On the whole.
And if you look at the flyer when you go to the second page, it says a total of one top percent. On the top, but yes, there's gonna be some interpretation that it was, we can't, all we can do is educate the voters the best way we can. Um, had a great conversation with a voter last week that had that same question. Um, that voter knew that that was just unheard of and that's why they were asking the question. And I explained it to them and they were like, that makes perfect sense, I understand now. But the reason I sent you guys this email from our bond council was because. Some of the things that keep me up at night is what happens after voting is done. Right, so um, I posed a couple of situational questions. Normally, when you have a municipal vote or a municipal election and there's write-ins and stuff. All of that has to be tabulated. And many of you have been here while you've had write-in, but um, write-in elections. And how it, and how it, how it ends up um, getting totaled, well. What the bond council told me is, I'm like, okay, well, we got five questions. If one question gets all yeses and the other four get no's, then. How does the city proceed? Or if it's three of five or two of five or whatever, if it's not all five, right? Um, and um. I wanted to know if the sales tax can only go towards the ones that have the most votes. And what our bond council said is that this, the state would actually. Um, uh, finalize that vote for us and tabulate it. So it's just like when we. Um, uh, confirm our election after a municipal election, they will do that for us and let us know which ones can move forward. Um, but that is one of the scenarios that we haven't really had a lens on recently, right? Is, you know, which one of these projects is gonna be the most interested to the voter? And are they gonna vote for all five of them or only the one that is closest and nearest to them, whether the library or the walk trail? And that will, that will play into the results of the election. So I want you guys just to have an open mind about how that's gonna work when it's done. Um. Yeah. So. We'll just see how, everything comes out in two weeks.
It's gonna be a nice election.
Right, I mean. There's a lot of things that go on after the election too, you know, after it's been certified. And I, I have to draft an ordinance in order for us to pass it and that has to go in and. Can't even take revenue until like quarter, the beginning of quarter two of next year, if everything goes the way we want it to. So there's a lot of other moving cogs to this, so I've got some, I've got some pro, some process. Already started so that it's not so much work for us later, but yes. Finding out which of those projects will receive funds this way. Has been. A question of my mind, the voter that actually came to me um. Also asked if there would be bonding for these projects after the fact. And I said, yes, there could be bonding, that's why the question is, is um. Uh, the language is that way, but the intention with the vote is that. Um, the revenue, the sales tax revenue would pay for the bonding, but yes, we would have to bond to pay for something and. Put in the money for it, it's just the revenue that we would get from the sales. the money for it, it's just the revenue that we would get from the sales tax would go towards paying the bond.
And that, it's like, forget the numbers, but I think it's like a fifty percent, isn't it, that's paid by folks that are.
I don't know if you'd really put a percentage upon that, but I, I think it's really important for the voter to understand that it is a sales tax, not a property tax. It isn't on clothing, it is not on fuel.
Or food.
Or food. So it's on everything else, right?
Sales tax is just charged by businesses within the city limits.
That's correct.
If your business is outside the city.
It is not.
There are some, you know, about the fact that you're.
That is correct.
Correct.
Yep, yep.
Anyone passing through, which you said fifty percent of people who live outside, it may be more than fifty, it could be more than.
Right.
If you live outside of town and drive in, you buy your groceries here. Yeah.
Sex, it's on your groceries, it's gonna be in, it's gonna be all the other stuff.
The other stuff.
Yeah.
It surely is.
Right.
Car repaired in town.
Yeah. If you, like Northwoods Lumber is in summer, so their whole business isn't, um, subjected to this, but because they deliver goods, they deliver whatever physical it is that they deliver to that, that essentially will get that half percent tax.
Okay.
Okay, so if you lived in the city, let's say you ordered some stuff like down here in your shed, and your lumberyard, was doing, was delivering it to the person who lived in the city. That post goods will get that half percent on top of what.
Quarter of the iron loads up, this, this perhaps just pick up two doors, which loads them up, so.
That's different.
No, every time, no. No, they may do this stuff.
No. There's always ways around it, right? You're on gas, and you don't have to pay for both of them. Yeah, there, there's, obviously, there's ways around it, but.
The gift shops that we have.
Yep.
The retail stores.
Yep. The liquor store, your service taxes.
Okay.
But yeah, the, the whole mindset of this becoming a ten and a half percent sales tax after the vote is done is, is absurd.
Right.
But, we need to educate our voters, so they can make them, they can make the decision they choose to make, and that's our role.
So, on election day, when the people come in here, uh, are you allowed?
Nope. I'm an election judge that day.
You can't say nothing to them.
It's not my, not my role at that point. That's why it's so imperative for people to be educated.
You can't put a sign up either on the door?
No, that's like, that's like people soliciting to vote one way or another for the president. You cannot do that, you cannot influence a voter's decision.
Nobody here can explain the questions in the building.
That is correct.
Have to be. Half a block away.
A hundred, a hundred or two hundred feet, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Honestly, Don, if you, if you wanna know, the first time we put it to the voters was when we didn't have to have it be, um, a regional significant project, and we could do it for infrastructure. And the way the language on the ballot was, it was so confusing.
If the money wasn't raised, or some, basically, and then it said it wouldn't be included on the property tax.
Yep, yep, so it never got, it never got approved, but no one saw it coming. Um, and I couldn't explain it to anybody, so it's just, you've gotta be an educated voter.
And the second it said property tax, boom.
It was done.
It was done.
Gotcha.
And, this is a much better way of wording it. I just didn't, I honestly did not think that it would be taken that way as a point five, point five, point five.
Honestly, I'm not surprised, Max, because when I was working on the draft for the, for the flyer, I showed it to a couple of people, even Mike was like, if you don't write the word total on here, everybody's gonna think it's a half percent for everyone, yeah. So, I mean, my lens, the way I look through things, I do it all the time, I need a clean, fresh brain that's like, I don't understand this. So, it's nice to see it differently, but a lot of people don't listen to the details. Or it doesn't function like that. Well, the, I mean, a lot of people don't make a decision when it comes to an election until the time that they're voting either, um. Gone are the days where you've got your ballot and you don't, I mean, we've got everything at the, at our leisure, right, you can go into the ballot box and Google all these people that are on the ballot and say, who is X Y Z judge, and this other person on the incumbent, and know who this person is, so you can make a decision. I mean, ten years ago, you didn't have that luxury, you were just like, you know, or, okay, vote for the incumbent. So, to be a voter and be actually knowledgeable about what you're voting for, what's, what you're voting.
I've never covered my eyes in voting, I've held my nose.
I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's not like those electronic test questions we used to have as a kid, where you're just trying to finish it, and they want to tell you, right, A, A, A.
You're throwing a D in there, and.
You know, okay, B, D, just to get it done, I mean, that, people really take.
Anxiety.
I hope people are taking their time, because our ballot is a pretty big.
Yeah. Previously, or other places I've lived, it was standard to receive a hard copy sample ballot in the mail.
Yeah.
Mailed over, so you'd be confronted with what your choices are. Many people are received by questions and have no idea.
Yeah. Um, I saw something online this week where, um, the state of Oregon sends out a booklet of all the candidates that are on precincts ballots, so people can research them, the, the candidates, before they get to the polling place. Every state's different. I hope people don't make the mind based on what they get through social media. I really don't, but I, I, I give everybody as much time as they want up until November fifth.
We are here to, but that is not the case.
Yeah.
Sailed. Uh, as far as the stage, the project goes, I'm waiting here. I reached out, I'm waiting to read that.
I'm like. Candace?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I forgot that. That's not on, that's not on the.
Not on the stage.
It's not on the ballot, your second favorite topic.
This page.
I don't know this, here we go.
Yeah, update myself on what we talked about last time.
You skipped right over it.
Good.
So, I connected to Brent Ruud from the county. Um, I'll try to highlight this as best as I can. Um, yes, the county is willing to accept the delegation, they have not started, started on their ordinance yet. Um, Brent is gonna include me when the county starts working on their process, like the, the, their meetings. It sounds like Washkish and Kellyer will all, and Vlata will all delegate to the county. The Nigi will go off on their own, which I expected, they're bigger. Um, it is a very good possibility that the county will adopt the sample ordinance from the Office of Cannabis Man, Management with the buffers as it sits. So when I had the planning meeting yesterday, I brought this up to the planning board. And basically, what I narrowed down to them is, I think it's up to the city at this point to delegate the zones that we want the types of businesses to be in. And I'll use the Office of Cannabis Management's sample or memo, because they have a really good, um, uh, the table in there of different types of businesses and things to consider when you're assigning a zone to go in. And the planning commission was in favor of that, right now, they are fine with them being, with the businesses being in B one, B two, and B three. Um, they're questioning I one and egg right now. In conversation last Wednesday, the county will, because the population restriction will only be able to issue five licenses. So, to the question that Shonda had regarding the liquor store, liquor store, the liquor, the municipals are different, you know, they're not counted in that total, and I said that originally. I just wanna go on the record that I'm not in favor of it.
Us having more.
No, I am not in favor of it, I think the oversight and the regulations will kill us. I don't think we're set up to do that. Um. If anybody puts a business in this town, it's probably gonna be a mezzo business, and it's probably gonna be from seed to, to retail. If they do it, it would be smart to do that, because you can, if you can do it with hydroponics, and you can do it indoor, then you wouldn't have to worry about the land that you need to grow.
Let's say somebody does have one.
Yep. Well, there's, there's specific types of businesses that can be in certain zones according to Office of Cannabis Management. The problem that we have as a city is, we don't have a comprehensive plan for our ag property right now, our ag zone. Lots of larger cities go like ten, fifteen, and thirty years and say, X amount of um, acreage is gonna end up being residential and, and move from ag to residential. If somebody, um, uses a plot of their land on ag one to raise from seed to plant, um, that would only be the type of business they could do there. Buffer conversation is a little bit more dicey. Um, if the county does the full buffers in their ordinance, it kinda doesn't really matter what we do. I looked at Detroit Lakes' ordinance, and they're doing it full registration, and full licensing and registration and ordinance themselves, because they're a bigger city, too. And, um, they have restricted where all of the businesses can go. And have also adopted the full buffers. And I'm, I've seen their downtown and where their old school is and everything, I, I know you're familiar with DL and OPL, right? And there's a lot of, like, their old school has got, um, a daycare, it's kind of a community center that would kinda go within that whole public school area kind of thing, and it overlaps a lot of their downtown areas, so, um. It'll be really interesting to see what the county does, some stuff are still open for debate. But Brent Ruud had some really good feedback, uh, from a seminar he attended, where a gentleman that is an insurance person for people that have these types of businesses, that there's no way in the world that the Office of Cannabis Management is gonna be ready to, for, give a license on on January one. I mean, they're basically building the cart and, and riding the horse at the same time with this business, right? They're hiring people, they're training them, they're reviewing these pre-licenses, there's just no way, they're not gonna be there by January one. Which, which kind of opens up our timeline a little bit, if you will. Our January meeting is really close to the first part of January, if the county adopts their ordinance by the end of November, we can still adopt ours by December. If they adopt theirs by December, we can still adopt ours the first part of January, we just need two readings, our first and our final. And they both have to be public notice. So, but the county has to do the same thing. Um.
They just had like five or six big people in that, in the state. Office quit.
At OCM?
The ones that were doing the, uh, medical marijuana.
Yeah.
They all walked off the job.
Yeah, this.
So they're kinda like, they're, they're falling behind, they follow their.
They're, they were already behind.
And, yeah, and, you know, the people that are on medical marijuana, they, they're like, you know, they were, they're like three months behind getting their prescriptions. Now all these people walked off the job, you know, because they don't really have a director there. Because they can't hire, nobody, nobody wants a position.
Oh, man.
Of the director, so.
Odd question, sure, so. Coming from poor farmers, we just have to. Well, okay. And how does that work with this situation? So let's say you're a property owner and you now have forty, fifty acres, that you are gonna lease out to somebody to grow stuff, is this something that they could do?
That's what I'm.
Okay.
Um, pardon, Nikki, leases land all over the place to put his farm in this area. So I don't see why not, it's just a different product that you're growing. So, yeah, I would say yes. Um. I would think if I was the property owner, I'd wanna make sure everything's on the up and up with the state of, with OCM, before I said yes. But yeah, I, I think that that could be a future option, once everything becomes legal.
I think, I think you're gonna see a lot of hydroponic.
I think so, too.
The simple reason is you're not gonna have to steal a property, because it's gonna be all indoors, inside, pretty figuring out.
Well, you control the atmosphere.
And you got it your round, and then, we are in northern Minnesota, I mean, you'd be spilling out too.
Yeah.
I mean, there are, there are, um, uh, greenhouses out there that are going all year round, that are still outside, but they're very well built. So that is a possibility. Um, I think this kinda ticks off a couple of the questions we had at the last time, there'll be five licenses for the whole county.
The whole county.
Yeah, because you can't, you can only issue one for twelve thousand five hundred people.
Okay.
I thought it was five licenses.
Yeah, yeah, for whatever reason.
No, they handle like stuff.
Okay.
So that's, and that's, that's a caveat, so that's another reason why these people that wanna have these businesses are kinda jumping at the bit to get their pre-apps in.
Right.
To get approved, because they wanna be first to be pre-approved, so that they can open, because they know there's a limitation.
Right.
So if one, if one business put in in Black Deck, there would only be four licenses left for the whole county, not including the Nigi.
Now you could have two in one, like, if somebody say the city of Black Deck could have two, no, no, we can only have one.
Um, what I read in there, and they're at Otter Tail County, specifically said it that you can, um, they won't, and Beltrami County, I don't know if they're gonna do this or not, but Otter Tail County, their ordinance says that there cannot be more than one business within an X amount of distance away from one another.
Okay. Just in case somebody asks, I just, you know, wanna make sure, we're gonna just have.
We are learning as we go, Melissa.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think Detroit, I would read about Detroit Lakes, I think there's like five hundred people that want.
Right, so, and I mean, I, I don't think that it's as big a, a worry as everybody, everybody thinks. You, you know, to have, yeah, would be great to have something open up, I, I think it'd be good, but in town. But, I think you're more likely to see something open in one of the neighboring townships.
Yeah.
Or two.
Well, here's another thing that I, another perspective I got from Brent Ruud is, um, the gentleman spoke to at this seminar basically said, the, the small mom and pops are, you know, really, they don't have the market on it, there are places, if you go to Colorado right now, where it's been legal for years, that are closing down because they're not making it. So Brent used in comparison, the one that's supposed to open in the moment, and that is supposed to be really great, and I've heard that small potatoes compared to some that will open, that have outside state mon. Will open that have outside state money to back them. So. Will we get some small ones? Yeah. How long they'll last? Who knows? It's a guess.
It's not.
I just don't think it's gonna be, like, like when marijuana became legal for personal use, everybody was like, oh gosh, we're gonna have. People walking up them streets, my kids are gonna be at a playground and somebody's gonna be there, it's just not that way. Um, because we live in a state. Where the Clean Air Indoor Act governs the way we are as. Citizens, right? And marijuana use in public is. Follows that.
Well, and to use the, well, THC products. Well, that's a whole nother story, versus if someone's smoking the flower.
Right, right.
Already made a lot of power, probably. Seven, five, nine, two, four, where.
Yes.
We have person stocks. Yeah, person stocks.
These licenses, are they first, first to account it? That. There's several different ones.
Okay, but, yeah, okay.
Um.
But just for retail, let's say that you wanted, you just wanted your retail space and you're gonna get. Product from all over.
Yep.
And selling the retail, is that part of that five in accounting?
Yeah, because there's several different types of businesses that OCM lists. There's cultivation, there's cannabis manufacturing, processing, and extraction, there's hemp manufacturing, there's wholesale. Cannabis retail, transportation, delivery, or events. So there's a number of different types of businesses. Um, this is one of the things I talked to.
Because the transport, there's a whole nother.
Yeah. Yeah.
Bunch of hoops to, you can just throw it. Back and pick up.
This is gonna echo a lot, kinda like how, when the microbrewers started.
Yep.
You know? So is this gonna affect Brody at all? No, uh, well, no, no.
Well, they already kinda regulated the house. Part of it.
Okay, right.
He's been buying his house. He was growing it and, you know, he has all the greenhouse all at his house.
Yeah.
And then, and then he decided. When he started making the. Cowbees and everything, he started buying the house, they couldn't keep up.
Oh, I bet.
And, you know, um. He, so he shut down growing it at his house.
Wow. Is that, is that, now is that gonna affect? Our one in, for our area? Or is he set up different than? I don't know. Okay, it all depends on what anybody does. The only thing that we need to be concerned about. Is setting our ordinance.
Okay.
You know?
Well, I was just wondering if, you know, if that's gonna affect us getting one in our area, because we already have somebody that's.
Depends if he gets his license in before somebody else does.
Right, right.
Yeah. If he is even requesting one.
Right, right.
I, does anybody have any questions? I kinda gave you some.
Yeah, Spurs moderate now.
I, I won't have much more to do on this ordinance except.
So the buffers, our, our buffers will be.
They'll follow the county.
Whatever the county says.
They'll follow the county.
Otherwise, what's the other option?
I don't know if we set our buffers if they supersede the county, that's the part, that's the one I'm going, I haven't nailed down yet.
If we can set our own buffers or.
Because the two cities that I saw their sample ordinances are, they exactly, were in Otter Tail County and they followed Otter Tail exactly on their buffers. And I question that.
You could be more.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right, it can be.
And that's the problem, because Otter Tail adopted the full buffers, and the buffers are optional.
Okay.
So if the county puts the buffers in. We, it's no longer an option. Right, then we have to follow what they're back on.
Wait a minute, I thought that's what we had been discussing this. As this has gone on about.
The problem with.
The locality of.
But I didn't know what the county was doing yet.
Okay.
That's, this is the biggest change, this happens the last time I talked to you guys, I actually talked to the county. And then what, what he told me is, is more than likely that the county's gonna adopt the buffers at max.
And that's us.
And that kinda puts, it puts the smaller towns out of, out of the playing.
And that's why I told him to include me in the conversation when the commission starts discussing it, though I've not gotten that yet.
All right.
I have one thing on the business. That I did not listen. All right, you wanna go first?
Okay, it might be your thing, I just wanna make sure we remember. That. Polls open for voting eleven hours after the conclusion of the, of the city council meeting.
Yes.
This space cannot be set up with a polling place until after the meeting, because.
Yep.
Meeting from the meeting, therefore, we will all be staying after the council. To assist proceedings. After direction. Breaking this down and setting up.
Thank you for that reminder.
Don't let them in your.
It won't take long, I guarantee it, will not take long. No problem. My new business, um, and I'm glad that Tim is here, um. Revolves around the lead line inventory. And, um, we did get our results, I sent out, uh, letters to ninety-four. Uh, residents that had unknown. Material. And three that have galvanized. And I'll put the documentation in the next meeting, so, um, you're gonna have like next steps, right? When it comes to. Those residents options.
What we'll see is. We're going to work on being proactive with our communities, you know, there's. Party dollars out there that are. Eater tamed or doing the service lines, so then it's just a matter of. Working with families and coming up with capital improvement, you know, because it makes sense to just, well, it's not pretty, bunch of ripped up trees and things like that, so. Can you somehow package this together and make it more of a capital improvement plan? Uh, so that'll be some more conversation on it, on this stuff.
My biggest concern, after I got the list from Caleb on Friday, is there are a number of, uh, service lines. That are on the unknown list that were included in, um. When they got new service, they got new service lines during the summit and main reconstruction. But it's really important for these residents to understand that. They're gonna get this level and they'll be like, well, I just got a new line, well, that was everything from your house to the main. This is what's in your house. And nothing got done in the house, and I, I explained this to Mike today too, I, I, I feel we may get a little backlash on this.
Well, and some of them, some of them may not have a concern either, you know. What this list was derived from was, one, do we have record documentation of what those materials were, or do they guys in the house? So, a lot of the people that bought us in our house and we had no record documentation, so we may fall into that.
I know, yeah, yeah.
So it just, it's just a cover up.
It is.
So the terminology.
People are gonna think that they own, they don't own the apartment.
Say it again, please.
The terminology in the letter said unknown service lines. Sent out, because I got one. Mine is, that was my question, I just wanted to be able. I photographed my copper service line coming through the floor. And in addition to that, I was in the trench. Nineteen seventy-nine, which I personally saw, but it's probably.
And you were on the listed as unknown?
Yes, sir. The other issue I bring up is, it's addressed to the street address, which the post office doesn't, if somebody had written it does.
You had to write the P O box on there, that was me.
Yep.
Yeah, that was me.
Copper line? Well, when did they outlaw slaughter with rabbit?
I don't know, we hear that.
No, they don't, my experience is flare joints and service lines, not slaughter this side. Period.
Ones on the outside, ones on the inside.
Yeah. But the letter I got, like I said, it said service line, it's leading, leading from the meter of the street, which is known, whatever.
Wasn't there? Letter, wasn't there like, this is what we're looking for? On this, the letter, the subsequent letter. I nailed that. I, I nailed them on Friday.
Well, but I'd have to look at that though, because the inventory was split out, it was what's in the right of way and what's out of the right of way, from there to the house, and so. It may have been known that you have copper from there in the right of way, but if we don't have record documentation of what's out in the street. That might be a reason for an unknown, so I don't know how that stuff all played out. You know, we'd have to look at the spreadsheet to see how that stuff was all categorized.
I hope Caleb gave me the right column.
Yeah, because inside the house, I have.
But the certification letters of ninety-three or ninety-four.
But whether it's in the city right of way or on your private, if there's an unknown in there, you're gonna get a letter as an unknown, because part of your service line is unknown.
Okay, so then, that.
So we'll just have to.
That helps, but I don't think it solidifies it, because you're like, no, I, I agree with Ron.
I mean, I, like I said, it was pretty broad, plus First Street is water next to it.
Yeah.
We moved in there, First Street was a thorough. And this is one block away, it's ground, that they did a, early seventies, they did a major water.
Maybe all the utilities.
So, I mean, as a kid, it was fascinating to see. Like, play these big concrete, stone sewer pipes.
Well, the seventies might be early enough for not having adequate documentation, I think they switched it probably to use some of the eighties.
Either way.
Yeah, it's certainly not plastic.
Either way, that, I. The notifications went out, they had to be out by, uh, November twelfth, I think.
This Friday.
Oh, yeah, this Friday. Yeah. I was. I was a little. Short with Caleb on Friday, I'm pretty sure I woke him up spicy. Like, thanks for the, thanks for the list. Can you force match the list I gave you, so I have the P O boxes, I'm rather gonna look all these guys up, I looked them all up anyway. No, he got it to me just as I finished. That's why it's a slash run, because I, I did a mail merge, but I had no P O boxes, I'm like, half of these aren't even gonna get delivered now.
Crap.
So that's called mail merge?
Yes, when you have a spreadsheet and you bring it together and sort it out. It's supposed to save you time. Yep. Uh, now I'm done. That offered a visit? Yeah, I didn't have any to begin with, I don't have you guys, I don't have special revenue budgets until. Next, 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 next meeting.
Over that. Small favorite.
All right.
Bye.
You got drank. Early stuff.
There were what stuff up? Not wrong week.
You can't do it tonight.
You wanna practice, is that what you wanna do?
He wants to practice.
You a test run?
You wanna read your back book? I've read the five questions over and over. And I'm, I was still blown away, because I, I saw it on the chit chat. The chit chat, where do you see this?